Okay, good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School Board Directors' meeting for Wednesday, June 20th. We will open our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance if you all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any public comments? All right, this is gonna be a good night. Our action items, financial treasures report for May, it's enclosed, we get a motion to accept it?
No.
Motion been made in second, is there any discussion on the treasures report?
Are we gonna have to make a decision on what to do with the bus sinking fund?
Okay, that's coming up on the chairs report. Thank you.
Jump ahead.
Okay, accepting the donation of the playground equipment from Head Start.
So I'd like to introduce Betsy Rathbun-Gunn from the Head Start Bennington.
Right, yep.
And Tara Parks, she's a parent of ours here at Powell and has children that have come through Head Start and currently she'll have a kindergartner and a third grader next year at Powell. So welcome. I know Betsy and Tara and I have been talking, going back and forth with a few meetings, talking about playground equipment for our three to five-year-olds. So at this point, Betsy and Tara?
Great, I'm gonna let Tara go first, is that what you?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm also not just a parent, but I'm the Chair of the Policy Council for Head Start. So when I started there, I really wanted to see some better equipment for our children at Head Start because, I don't know if you noticed, but they are not allowed to use what's out there currently because of regulations and federal guidelines.
Due to their age.
They can't, the fall zone, the fall height, there's multiple things that restrict them from using it. So my son Wyatt, who's going into third, was there and they couldn't use it, so I've been working with Betsy for a number of years on getting this and she found some funds and we were able to come up with these designs. So we're seeking approval to install it, make the addition to the playground, but also we're hoping for a match of in-kind and justice surfacing. So we'll cover all the playground stuff. And the main reason I wanted to do it was because Wyatt would play on the playground and Uriah couldn't participate with him, he's my four-year-old, and Wyatt would run off and Uriah would be stuck there on the ground, so it was really discouraging for a lot of the kids that they couldn't play on it. It's this really exciting-looking structure and they can't, they can't use it. So that was my, my big push for it. I'll let Betsy explain.
And as the board remembers, we had some equipment here that we did have to remove because it was not under safety regulations for our students, so we did have to remove some pieces. So this was an exciting time when Betsy and Tara approached me about possible equipment for our playground. Betsy?
Yep, so we have a grant from the Agency of Education out of DC and it's called our Preschool Development Expansion Grant and we are doing some enhanced services, including extending the day for our Head Start students here through that grant. That grant is coming to an end next year, so I had an opportunity to be able to put the funding for this in, in this year's grant. So our hope is that this would be done over the summertime. We have about $30,000 that we have set aside, you can see, I think, I don't know if Tara handed you out the budget, it's about 27 and change, so we're right in there where we want it to be. Here, let me hear if she didn't hand up the...
I only have one copy.
Here, I can hand up the other one. So, like all federal grants that I oversee, I also have to get direct in-kind or community support for the funding. So we figure by, by us having the funds to be able to purchase it and have it installed and then Powell making the commitment to doing the surfacing for it, that would be kind of a little bit of a swap of in-kind and be able to support the structure. We've gone to three different vendors, these are vendors that do playgrounds all the time, they are vetted vendors, it's not a huge structure, 'cause, you know, it's interesting to me how these things work these days. Tara and I were at my computer, we were chatting with one of the vendors, I don't know where the vendor was, probably in California somewhere, they were able to Google Earth, Powell Playground, see exactly what you had on the, on the, on the site and be able to sketch out where it might fit. And it is, it is a tight fit 'cause you have a variety of structures out there, so it would be really working with your facilities people and making sure you have the fall and use zones correctly, but it is an opportunity and these funds will not be around again, so that's why we're looking to address this need and be able to help fund this piece with that, so that's what we're, our plan would be doing.
What's the amount you want, you're looking for Powell to invest in?
I don't know what the surfacing would be, we didn't get that quote, so it would be the surfacing, it would be the bark chips that usually, I don't know what they are per square foot, so we would have to find out that.
Yeah, and that's why I invited Kevin here tonight. Kevin was involved with a little bit of planning of looking at our playground, also getting another installation quote from C-Corps.
Yep.
So that was sent in an email today. But Kevin, the, the surfacing and the wood chips, we've purchased before, so probably depends upon the square footage.
Square foot, right, and it does have to be 12 inches deep.
Right.
And a certain area around it. And off the top of my head, the last batch we did so that they could use that swing set out there, I think was around, I wanna say around 70 yards of the fine mulch, and I wanna say it was around $1,500 for, for that mulch, but I don't have that right from, I did get the quote from what it would be for them to, C-Corps to install it.
Right, which was around $4,000.
Right, not to exceed, what it is, I talked to Bruce and he says it's a very difficult thing to pinpoint, it's gonna be like time and material because they gotta pour sonotubes and all that stuff to mount, and he said it's, you know, they're looking into it, there's a lot of parts to putting it together, but he said it wouldn't exceed $4,000.
Yeah, so the quote that we have here, this is with installation, so I always feel that the company that's making the equipment really knows it best to install it, so again, this would be, the installation would be covered, so this would be, 'cause we had to go to three vendors, you know, you have to go out to bid with these things and cover all those guidelines, but this was the one that we felt really was small enough to fit in the space, and then we have to decide, they looked at it with having the teeter totter as part of one big space. I don't know if the teeter totter needs the same type of fall zone as they've outlined there, so it's really looking for the board's approval for going forward with this project and working with folks to be able to outline where it might fit within the playground and see if we could get it done either this summer or early fall.
Okay, this quote here, this is what you're asking Powell to donate?
No, that is what we're paying.
They're paying this total of the two pieces with installation, what they're asking for the board is to go forward so we could do the project and we would do the surfacing, so that would be the wood chips, making sure that it's deep enough, the 12 inches, if there's anything needed for around the edges.
Yeah, we noticed the edges weren't in that quote, since we have a little bit of wiggle room, I thought I'd have them go back and, you know, again, we have up to 30,000, so I can, you know, I can see if we can cover that, that edging that holds that in there, but it's really asking for the contribution of the wood chips.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there a minimum for that amount of in-kind contribution?
Well, you know, this is different than my Head Start grant where I have to have a 25% match.
Yeah.
So this is more like a 10% match is looking at that type of thing, so that's why it's about $2,000 or so. You know, I'm working, this funds are funds that come actually out of DC, go to AOE in Vermont and then come to us, but they have to see the community is putting, you know, some effort in funding and matching.
They just usually have a match amount that you have to promise.
Yeah, so it's around 10%. Yep.
So if the board would...
Make a motion, we accept, and chip in three grand, not to exceed three grand.
Yeah, see where you go, and then it would come back differently, we can come back too and see where it goes.
I'm okay with that, I just didn't wanna be blank.
Second?
Motion been made in second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favors, sign if I raise your hand, okay.
Thank you so much.
It is very exciting and it's nice to get some of our federal tax dollars still to work here in the community, right?
Such a positive thing.
And Tara deserves all the credit because she has kept, she has kept the fire under my feet on this project. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
There gonna be some kind of restriction from Fiona kids using this stuff?
No, actually, extra children, well, that's why I take that.
Okay, that was gonna be my question too, Jan, good.
We don't have any problem with other kids, you know, yeah, it's a good question though.
Yeah, very good.
Appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Very exciting.
Good night.
Kevin, while you're here, I don't know if you wanted to mention anything about the facilities for summer or anything, I think we were pretty good last meeting, but...
Yeah, I think so. The only thing that we were wondering about last time was if we, we were waiting for kind of a price on the, we were talking, thinking about doing something with windows, but we're now working, Vic is working on a grant for that and getting that material through the grant.
Windows?
For shatterproof, for the entrance windows. Yeah, don't get, not, yeah, yeah, Doors and Window Project.
So excited to see the kids.
Also working on it for strobe lights and that type of thing, so he's working on that, other than that, everything's pretty much the same that we, we do have to get some other wood chips for the playground too. We had that inspection of last week and everything really went quite well with the exception of what we were gonna, we talked about doing last time, some changes and...
But that's getting thrown around after a few years, understand that.
But that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
All right, we'll see you later.
All right.
Oh, forgot your keys. Okay, I can't confirm on that one. I just wanted to get off. Oh, and the glass, I wanted to get off camera, it's kind of horrible.
The consent agenda's next.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Hold the consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. All right, well, go down, right down to policies, this is to Warren, 7100, Board Member Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made in second, is there any discussion on the Board Member Education policy? Hearing none? All those in favor? Very good, and that's to Warren. All right, the next one is 7300, Public Participation at Board Meetings.
So moved.
This one is to adopt. Motion been made in second, is there any discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor, please signify with a raise in your hand, unanimous. Okay. All right, Kevin just gave us the facilities update, and the only one that wasn't, didn't hear it from Kevin, but Kevin wanted to let the board know, he was extremely pleased with his raise.
Oh, good.
Very pleased, and he said thank you about 20 times.
Kevin's happy with his raise?
Yes.
He thanked everybody.
He thanked us at the ice cream special.
All right, well now we're down to the superintendent's report and I am pleased to have the assistant superintendent with us.
And I am pleased to be here, as Mr. Colkeen called it, my farewell tour.
Yeah.
Donna, can we have to sign the consent agenda?
Oh, yes.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention a little bit of business, I did see that the, the Agency of Education has set a date of September 19th for discussions about Act 46. It will be in, I think it was Chester was the announcement, it's very recent, I think it came out last Friday night after, after midnight. No, so that is coming up in the future, I believe that the, the board is having a meeting to discuss the report that came out from, from the agency and then they will be having these public, the meetings with the board are for input in September. So the timeline is then that the proposals that are made will be put into place in November to be implemented in July, next July, July 1st. So that's the progress that's being made toward unification of any of our districts. I believe that the report that was sent out was saying pretty much that there would be an elementary district and an MAU district and SU district to, because it's something a district needs to oversee all of the districts, and North Bennington, I believe, is still a standalone at this point, but that's to be continued.
Have you heard what the makeup of the elementary board would be?
We haven't heard anything about the governance structure, but it would be all of the elementary schools, including BSD.
Right, yeah.
But I, we have not heard anything about the specifics.
Okay, Donna, I'm sorry, you said there's gonna be three, the elementary, the SU, and what was the other one?
MAU.
MAU.
The report did not exclude the possibility of still putting the elementary and the MAU together if that were the wish of the, of the, all the districts.
Yeah, we didn't want that.
I, I, some, you know, that was kind of...
We stressed that was one thing, we did not want a K through 12, K through 12.
Right, well they did, that was not, they just said it wasn't excluded as a possibility.
Yeah, they would hear from some many, many board members if they did that.
Well, your chance will come to be in the discussion, September 19th.
September 19th, up in Chester?
Yes. I believe they even posted times, but whatever.
Yeah, I consider that's posted.
Never.
Oh, do you have that?
I could.
Could you send it to her?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Yeah, this for everyone who wanna be at.
Yep.
I'm going to give you the electric bill from Senior Center, goes to Renee.
Okay, perfect.
Can you just put it right in that box?
Sure. Those handy boxes.
All right, so...
So this is my farewell tour and I just wanna say thank you, I've really enjoyed working with Powell and with Todd and his staff here, I, I would say over the past six years, we have, we've made some big changes and really our school is a better place and our district is also moving in the right direction in many ways. I think they, we've built some real collaborative structures that have helped us look at better educational models and how to help implement that and also refining somewhat our evaluation systems, especially working with our administrators and directors to have, have goals and objectives to meet according to expectations for those job descriptions and, and the responsibilities that go with them.
And many changes, good, good, good changes.
So I think that we have done some really good work and I wanna thank Todd and his, his team down here, his staff has made a lot of changes and it is not an easy road. And I think that they are, that changes very hard from, from what we're used to doing and, but I think that Powell School is the jewel in the crown of the SU because you have really, you have really implemented and showed everyone what can be done with good educational practice.
Inside and out, yeah.
Yeah, so I wanna thank you for that.
We keep, we keep telling everybody that, but they don't listen. Thank you for everything you've done.
All of your results and your, your school is just doing terrific, really, really.
Yeah, we're very proud.
Yeah, you should be.
Very proud, and I think you have something to tell us, young do you, chair of the board.
I do, and I would also like to thank Dr. Leath for her guidance and assistance along with a great team at the SVSU, I mean, we have the curriculum director and we have a data specialist and we have some coaches up there that we really work as a team, so thank you for that. I'd also like to thank the school board members for serving ice cream last Friday at our barbecue on our field day event, it was a fun activity and the kids really enjoyed coming up for that large scoop of ice cream.
You're welcome.
The little ones came back with it, they were almost like bigger than you, we were like, wow, some ice cream there, so thank you.
It was a pleasure, it really was.
So this is the time of the year that we really take a look at our class list, we have move-up day coming Friday, and we had to make a little bit of change, and I talked to Cindy last week, we had two very, very small third grade classes that I needed to combine into one third grade and to expand our kindergarten sections to three kindergarten 'cause we had 40 incoming kindergarteners and I could not see a class of 20 and 20 where we have a very small, two third grade classes. So that third grade class will be a size of 19, so that's very manageable for third grade, so we're excited to expand that kindergarten to three sections, the teacher was very excited to move to kindergarten, so I think it's going to be great for the kids to have smaller class sizes, looks like we'll have a, you know, like a class of 14, 13, 13, somewhere around there. So there's a couple of things that I would like to ask the board tonight, I know we have a resignation of one of our kindergarten pairs, so we would have to post for that position, but I would also like the board to give me the go-ahead to post for a one-year kindergarten pair position for that third classroom. We do have one other resignation that's coming that hasn't been in our board packet, so I don't wanna ask for that posting yet because it just came in yesterday, I emailed central office and copied you on the resignation of one of our contract.
I didn't even look at it.
Okay. So whether I should ask for that?
I, I think you can ask for a posting, that's not really a financial issue.
So would also need to post for a behavior interventionist.
Oh, I can get that one.
Okay. Other than that, just taking a look at our sections, it's an end-of-the-year celebration, we, we've had another great year and I think the kids worked really hard, we have some very fine learners in this, in this building that have showed us tremendous progress from the beginning of the year till now. Maps results and S-Back results will be mailed home with report cards next week. We have one more day of, a full day of school and then Friday's a very quick, we have a move-up day, we have a special assembly for the kids and then we have early lunches and then we release at noon, so end of the year is upon us.
Yeah, it's gonna come quick.
I think that's it.
Okay, well actually, you didn't mention that one of our own staff, one of our teachers was nominated Vermont Teacher of the Year, Mr. Robinson.
Right, you are right.
So I think that's, I was very pleased and proud to hear that.
Great honor.
Very big honor from the state of Vermont. Excellent. All right, under the chairs report, I have a few things. Okay, Donna just said we're not sure what the makeup of the elementary board is, but I would like to remind the present board members to keep in mind, they're probably gonna have at least two board members, and I'd like to see at least two from this board move forward to the new board if, if it's possible. Just food for thought, give it, give it a thought, I'd hate to see all new board members because one or two is okay, but they need veteran board members to sort of start it up, it's just thoughts, and I'm gonna think about it too, so I'm just letting you guys know, food for thought. Okay, you could smile there, Tammy, I know. Okay, the other thing is, I'd like to take this time to let you know that there was a mishap with our, our account in Powell, it was, $50,000 was taken electronically, they're not sure, the FBI got involved, they're not sure who took it, but lucky for us, we have insurance, Renee's been working very hard to keep us posted, they're gonna cover all but $5,000. They, they think it's out of country, they have no clue when it's taken, how it was done, who knows, but it was done electronically. I guess they tried to take a bigger amount from a different school and that was, I think that was stopped, there were two of them, from what I understand.
Well Cindy, can I ask a question about that though?
Sure.
So our funds go to a bank account that the SU oversees, so there's a fund account specifically for Powell and specifically, 'cause I thought it was all kind of...
No, I can't believe, they're all separate.
I think they're separate.
Yeah, they're all separate, until we become one, and of course it will be one account for, like elementaries, if that's the way it's set up, but right now, Chesbury has theirs, Powell has theirs, Woodford, no, it's all separate, but this money was taken out of the elementary school, Powell Elementary School.
Which bank?
I don't know, I didn't ask that.
So what safeguards have been put in place to keep this from happening again?
Um, I'm sure, I don't know that either.
Were insured?
That would be, we're insured, yes.
Yeah, all the $5,000.
Yes, so in the end, all we lost was $5,000 out of the 50, but I'm sure, I mean, the FBI was involved, it may still be involved, I don't know.
Wait a minute, we're, we're insured, are, the school itself is insured? Because the bank is insured for a certain amount of money as well, so they should be covering that $5,000. We shouldn't be paying this...
Or a portion of that $5,000, I would assume.
I don't, I'm just...
I think it's like $250,000 for most accounts, I mean...
I'm just relaying, yes, $100,000 is mostly FDIC, right?
$250, usually.
Oh, $250.
Yeah, $250.
Yeah, I don't know, I can ask Renee that question.
Yeah, I don't wanna pay that $5,000 if we don't have to.
If we don't have to, yeah, that's a good question.
I'd like to know the bank and what their policies are regarding their own insurance.
And what they're gonna do to stop this from happening again.
Right, 'cause maybe we need to find a different bank.
Maybe we should move a different bank, exactly.
Which bank uses it?
I don't even know what bank, it's, it's in the middle room.
You don't know which bank we have a count in?
No, Cindy doesn't know.
I'll find out.
Nobody here knows.
I'll find out.
Isn't there something on, an amount that should be okayed? I mean, $50,000 is a huge amount of money.
That's, from what I understand, it was even larger, the, the second one, we're the second one, the first attempt was a different bank and it was much larger than ours.
And they stopped it, but didn't stop ours.
It saves a lot.
That's why I'm thinking that there should be like two okay's or...
Yeah, some verification processes.
Exactly.
Right, but you know, when you get, you get people that are so savvy in electronics that it's pretty hard to, they could be, they could be in Russia, who knows, they could be Germany, who knows?
Democratic Party too.
But somebody at the bank said okay.
Well, obviously.
So they should hold some responsibility.
They should hold some responsibility, exactly.
Well, I'll check into it more, I haven't had time to, I did send Renee a couple questions, she answered them, something else, but, but that's, that's where we stand with that one. Okay, I'll, I'll get back to you, I'll find out more and find out what bank. The other thing I've been working on, there's going to be a, an election in August, the town is gonna have an election, and so I talked to our town clerk and asked her what we had to do to put our article, which I think we should put it on in August, we should be proactive and do it before we have our combination about moving the money, the bus sinking fund money, and so we need to write up an article, she said it'll be a special vote, but we can run it along with the town, is the town's, what they're running, I think, is preliminary things, so we can do a special article asking the people to, and it's up to the board, do you wanna add it to the general fund, do you wanna give it back to the taxpayers, we're talking about $118,000, so what is your pleasure?
$115,000.
$115, okay.
So what's that going to tax rate down, a penny, two pennies?
Probably two pennies, oh yeah, $115.
Don't we need a new boiler?
I think we should, I think we should hang on to it for a new boiler.
That's, ask, we have to ask them to move it to a special fund for a new boiler. Does that make sense?
You're gonna give it back, it's gonna be two cents, really, careful on the tax rate, so, you know, that's kind of, that's kind of cutting off your nose to spite your face.
Okay, so we don't...
How much did Kevin say the new boiler was?
I don't know.
I don't, I think he's still checking.
He's still checking on it, right?
Yeah, he's still checking.
It's gonna be 50, 60 grand anyway.
A couple heating system upgrades.
I thought he said like around 18.
Yeah, so I'm thinking that should be moved.
Oh, yeah, heating and cooling.
Heating and cooling.
Heating and cooling, yeah. So we don't, but do we wanna, do we wanna move it to a special fund or general fund?
No, not the general fund because that could be used for, special fund for heating upgrades.
I would say, who, cooling and heating.
HVAC.
Heating and cooling.
HVAC upgrades.
I think your town would be most likely to pass something that was assigned to a specific project.
Project, exactly.
Yeah, for this building.
Heating and cooling. Heating and cooling upgrade.
Or roof, was there really talk about roof?
We have, we actually started a.
Saving money.
A sinking fund for the roof about a few years ago.
They, they go a few years and then you need to do more, that's another thing.
We had, I think, I think we had this gentleman come down and give us a quote and said, you can, you know, take, take it out so many years, so we've been putting X amount of dollars in it.
Put it in the same bank, don't hold up this lawsuit.
Are you sure the Queen of Nigeria doesn't get a hold of it?
Now, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure what the wording is unless we can just, do we write that article to go on the ballot?
You could ask Renee for help, I know she has skills in building and looking for RFPs and.
Move it from, from the bus sinking fund to a heating and cooling upgrade.
State of Oklahoma.
Okay, I gotta call her anyways, but.
Yeah, it would be something simple, but she would have good language.
Okay, all right. All right, so I think that's all my notes. Now, the next question is, we usually do not meet in July, what's the board's pleasure?
We'll float your vote.
I'd be okay without meeting as long as there was nothing present.
Well, definitely if something, uh, pressing came up, I would have to call board meeting. But other than that, so we're all in favor of not meeting in July?
Yeah, but I'll make a motion that you are allowed to sign papers or whatever, if it need be.
Oh, yeah, okay.
You might need to do something for that, if it's a special election, you might have to have some authority to put that on the ballot. I, I don't know if you would have to take a vote or give you the, whatever you need to do for that.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do a ballot?
Between now and August is, goes fast.
It's going to, yeah, it's going to be 30 days before, anyway.
Yes, yes.
So that'll be July.
There's a date.
Well, you could just email everybody, would you come up with it?
Right.
Okay, I can show you what we, but maybe you should, um, have a vote to give me permission to go ahead with that.
With the approval of the article for that.
Right.
So we have a motion to sign any papers and, how do you want to say it? And any information, any thing that needs to be done for the special?
We need a ballot, we need a ballot, if you approve.
Yeah, because I'll work with the town clerk, I'll, I'll talk with, um, Renee to get the correct wording and then I'll make sure we have it and give it to the town clerk so she can, she did tell me a time, timeline and I got it somewhere, obviously didn't put it here. But, um, it is sometime in, hmm, maybe the end of July, I think it is. So she has a, she has to have X amount of days before the voting.
Should have a, between 30 and 45 days before.
Before, well, we, it's Ju, it's June, so I'll make sure we have it in plenty of time.
Do you know when the voting is in August?
Hmm, not off, no, and if I, if I heard it, I forgot it. I'm not sure, but I'll find that out too.
What are we going to do then?
Yeah, definitely, let's see. Well, maybe it's, I don't know, no, wow, I got a lot, well, I guess it's busy. Um, when is voting? Okay, I'll find out and I will email you guys. And if I have any other questions pertaining to the article, I'll, I'll email you, okay? All right, I think that was all I was going to, make sure, get any other notes. Oh, that's nothing.
So were you, were you going to make a motion and give you the authority to do those things?
We do.
So do you need a second?
No, John made the motion, Todd seconded it, I think we just need to vote.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right, it's unanimous, thanks. All right, um, I personally am saddened to see Laurie Barard go. Laurie Barard has been a parent in the kindergarten class eons, long time, long, long time. And I feel bad that we're losing our behavior specialist and, and I hope maybe that she's explained to you why and it's a good reason and, uh.
Right, it is.
Is it, okay.
Sad to see the lady on the end go too.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, thank you for that.
Absolutely, yes, that, that, that goes, well, I think I said that last month.
You did, you gave me a nice send-off and then here I am again.
Yes.
As John said, what are you doing here?
Yeah, you definitely will be truly missed and thank you for all the positive things you have taught us.
Well, it's, it's good when there's a responsive crew and this has been a wonderful place to work. And the results are, are clear, very, very good.
Excellent. All right, is, uh, the budget status report is enclosed, the SVSU student enrollment for June is enclosed. If there's no other business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? All righty, I never should have known that.